Good evening. Today is Monday, it is May 16, 2011. I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. Let me advise you, this is an open meeting. And posted over in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act, made available for any of you that may want to do some reading. So, I would ask you to join with us in a moment for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Okay, first on our action is a move for approval of the consent agenda with a couple changes to this, item nine on your consent agenda. I would ask that to be removed from the consent agenda and made part of the regular agenda for discussion. And as well, item number 18, I would ask that that be removed from the consent agenda and to be added at another time, for another meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Have a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion and second with changes made. If you would please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and next would be approval of the full agenda with the addition of item nine from the consent agenda added to that. Motion for approval.
So moved, as amended.
Second.
Motion with a second, as amended, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
All right. First, under special presentations, we look for a recreation update, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Short and sweet this evening. The grade work continues there at Veterans Memorial Park. Porter Construction did a very nice job of getting that down to grade, and I talked to Jeff Porter, he said he's within a half inch, however, there was some water and getting the soil dry and the compaction rate to where they needed to be. They had to loosen it up again and get that taken care of. About two-thirds of the field is at moisture content and at the compaction rate they need. They're working on the other third. If the weather holds this week, it looks like their next plan is to put some of the tile work in, begin the tile work under the field there, so they can continue to move forward with the turf installation. So, a lot of action down there every day, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council or any of the public might have on Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at all, council? Okay, and before we get into the public hearing, let's go back and pick up consent agenda number nine, which is consideration of approval of a contract with Nebraska Environmental Trust grant for a household hazardous waste facility supported by the city of Norfolk and the Lower Elkhorn NRD. Gary Lund, we'll look to you to give us information, please.
Need a motion first?
Yeah, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Okay, a motion and a second?
We'll vote.
No, no vote until after. We'll have discussion. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Gary.
The simplest definition of that household hazardous waste facility is it's going to replace our Saturday morning events where we were out at Tazuka at last. We were open for about four hours and we took a couple semi-loads of hazardous waste. The groups that seem to have a lot of interest in getting rid of the hazardous wastes are the ones that are moving or maybe cleaning out grandpa's house when he moved somewhere else. We're not providing a good service to them, and that's going to be helped with household hazardous waste facility. It's going to be open at least five days a week. It may not be open our full 10-hour day or nine-and-a-half hour day, but essentially it's going to be an everyday operation of much more accessible to the public. And it'll be a way for them to get the hazardous garden chemicals, household chemicals, out of their home when they don't want them, when they don't need them. It gets it out of the handling system, the garbage trucks and the guys that throw that stuff in the back of the truck, they don't end up with that back in their face. And it ensures that it goes to an appropriate disposal site rather than to our mental. It's being supported by $125,000 from the Nebraska Environmental Trust and $30,000 from the Lower Elkhorn NRD. That leaves about $49,000 for the city of Norfolk if we use up all of our contingency money that we have planned. In addition, we've spent $7,500 on a concept study to give a general design to the building that we need and what we need to be doing in that building. That money's been standing ready. So, we've got about $49,000 expended.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Gary?
Where will this facility be?
Transportation. Then transportation. And it'll be serviced by our existing staff.
So, pretty much the same hours, same?
Pretty much. I hesitate to say that it could be on Saturdays, since we would have busy Saturdays in the spring, and this one's very popular to use that. So, we'll go with the flow, what the public needs and demands, we'll be there for.
Make the assumption this will include paint?
Yes. Paint is one of the things that we spend a lot of money on. I think there's some savings there for us. All of those hazardous wastes, all of those materials that we took on those Saturday mornings were trucked out to the incinerator in western Nebraska. And that's a very expensive way of handling latex paint. So, we can find a couple of other options, and that is probably the biggest single volume of material that we take, and we can cut a lot of that disposal cost out. We were spending $9,000 on each one of those events, and instead Nebraska was matching up with another $9,000, and certainly the biggest volume was paint. We'll find another way to handle paint. There's several options that we can use here.
Gary, there's no commercial guys bringing any of that over, is there, at this point?
No, not at this point. And as this says, it's household hazardous waste. It's designed for the household, it's not designed for farm chemicals. We can cooperate with some other organizations that want a farm chemical program, or if there's some other need, a commercial need in town, this can coordinate and use a facility for that, but it's been designed in size just for the household waste.
Gary, just can you explain where it's going to be built, like in regard to the scale house now, it'll be?
It'll be close to the scale house. We'll let the design engineer pick that, either north or south, pretty much along that east property line somewhere close to the scale house. They'll have to come across and identify what it is they're doing and what they've got, then we'll give them the go-ahead to go over and unload.
I know we talked about north and we talked about south, but?
Yeah, we have a couple of options.
Yeah, thank you.
Gary, I'd like to thank you for the further explanation of the economics involved here.
Gary, the expenditure, the 49 that we're talking about, is that going to happen in this fiscal year or that probably in the next capital?
Upcoming fiscal year. We had 20,000 in this budget year, and the funds become available with the mayor's signature tonight. So, we can start spending money as soon as the mayor signs that contract and we get it in the mail. It ends on the 1st of July of 2012. We'll have to ask for an extension if we run late, but I would very much like to get that in the ground this fall, so we can finish construction through the winter and have it available spring or early summer next year.
Gary, I think this is good, because I think the people of Norfolk, like you said, a lot of times don't have, they don't store that stuff, they try and throw it somewhere. So, by you offering this, I think it's going to help a lot.
I hope so.
Yep.
One of the things that folks, this is Dennis, one of the things that folks can do with the latex paint is, you know, open the can and let some air to it, so if it dries out, once it's dried out and it's in a solid form, it's acceptable to go in the regular trash.
And another hidden benefit, Mayor and Council, and I'm sure Chief Cordis and his hazmat technicians at the fire station would agree with this, is the fact that if we can get our citizens accustomed to taking their household hazardous waste to the disposal site, it really eliminates a lot of, some of the major dangers that the firefighters encounter when the infrastructure's on fire. Even if it's not on fire, we've had apartment dwellers who've stored unbelievable amounts of different sort of household chemicals and other chemicals in their apartments, and until we are able to really know where they're at, you know, that it causes some unknown dangers there for not only the citizens, but obviously the firefighters and the technicians as well. So, it's a wonderful program from that viewpoint, too.
I would kind of have to assume, Dennis, there's probably more things that the public would benefit from knowing, like drying out latex paint, Shane, as you had mentioned, some of those other things. So, maybe this is an opportunity for us to put something like that in the city focus and try to educate the public a little bit more on some of the reasons why they should be using that facility.
We will definitely do a lot of advertising once we get this open, explaining, I think it'll take quite a little paperwork repeating it to the public, which is something you look for every day. And it'll be on the website, people need to look there.
Do you think late spring or early summer next year?
That's my target.
Okay. I just mentioned the latex paint, because that's something that can be done now, even without this facility.
Okay. Gary, thanks. I appreciate you being here and giving us explanation. So, any other questions at all? Other comments? Okay, if not, we have a motion with a second. I believe we are ready to take roll call then.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Moving on then to public hearings. On the agenda first is a public hearing to consider amending the comprehensive plan at 305 North 37th Street. And as well, I'd like to combine with that the public hearing at the request of James R. Galen for a zoning change from R3 to C1 at 305 North 37th Street. I will open both public hearings and look for someone that may want to come forward and speak here, talk to us about this. I'll ask you to state your name for us and sign in.
My name is Jeff Gallion. I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of my brother, James Gallion, who goes by Jim. Jim is in the process of purchasing the Sunny Meadow School. That's the property at 305 North 27th Street from Norfolk Public Schools. And we're requesting that Sunny Meadow property be rezoned from R3 to C1. Jim and his wife Carrie are family practice doctors. They have three children, they currently live in Atkinson, Nebraska, and were unable to make it tonight. If the zoning change is approved, they intend to move to Norfolk and operate a medical clinic at Sunny Meadows' location. They'll make a significant investment in improvements to that location before that clinic would open. We believe that the proposed zoning change is reasonable and consistent with the surroundings in that area. To the south and southeast, the properties are zone C3. To the north and east, the properties are zone R3. There's a large number of medical service businesses in that area, and as I said, that's what they intend to operate there. We think the C1 fits in well with that gradual transition in light of all that. I'd also, I also think it's important to consider the fact that we have a property there that's had a past use on it and has an existing building on it already. We're not dealing with a vacant property that we want to change the zoning and then build a building. We have a building there. We need to get that building on the tax rolls and put it to use. It's been used in the past for a school. There's been a certain amount of traffic and people coming and going from that property in the past, and we don't see a large change from that standpoint with the medical clinic going in. In fact, if anything, I'd guess the traffic count might go down, there might be fewer people coming and going. I think it'd be a benefit to the neighborhood, in fact, and would be every bit as good of a use as what has been used there in the past. In fact, when we've discussed it, we can hardly think of a use that could go into that building that would be more beneficial to the neighborhood or less detrimental to the neighborhood, however you want to look at it. Dr. Jim and Dr. Carrie are considering some retail sales within the clinic itself, not a large amount, but some. And the clinic will not occupy the entire property initially. There will be some additional unoccupied space. There are no plans for that space right now. Down the road, it could be used for commercial development. The primary goal is the medical clinic, and any proposed uses down the road would have to be appropriate in light of the clinic. That's the primary goal of the applicants. In sum, Jim and Carrie are excited about this prospect, they're looking forward to the opportunity, hopefully, to move down to Norfolk and to open and operate this clinic. They're excited about the idea of being long-term residents here and serving the community. And with that, we'd ask the council to approve the zoning change from R3 to C1. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
The retail that might be done out of there, is that going to be done out of the medical clinic, or is it a separate use of retail space?
They don't know for certain, but they have considered some retail sales right out of the clinic. Some shelf space and a limited amount of retail sales right out of the clinic. So, there is a, that is one of the reasons we're requesting the C1 zoning designation. The other area could obviously potentially have some commercial applications. Again, they would only be interested if they're appropriate in light of the clinic, so we're probably looking at uses consistent with the clinic, you know, other health-related commercial operations or something that wouldn't detract from the medical clinic.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a question. Currently, and there's a house adjacent to the north, is that residential there? And to the west, is that ag, or is that, what's the current zoning in that situation?
The house is within that R3 area. I don't know if Dennis has the map there. That purple shaded area would be the proposed subject property of this zoning change, so it's a part of that large swath of R3 that's there. That house would reside in that area that Dennis is indicating. As you can see, there's a large section of C3 that wraps in and around it to the south and the west. And then to the east of the property, directly across the street is R3, and to the southeast, that large area that he's pointing to now is all C3. Some of that dates back to 1967. There's subsequent zoning changes in '94 that brought in another section of commercial zoning there. So, that C2 box that you see there was also done in 1967, I believe. So, there has been some commercial zoning there for a long time with the implementation of the Carhartt subdivision area on the east side of 37th Street. Much of that zoning was done in '94. And the subsequent annexation that shows that red line, if you look at that red line boundary there, that is the western city limits line there, right there. So, that becomes the actual city of Norfolk city limits line, as it wraps around.
Any other questions, council? Okay. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to come and speak in favor of this?
I'm Al Regi. I am a businessperson in Norfolk, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I am here this evening to ask for your support of this change, zoning change, and possibly fast-tracking this process as it is a very viable need for city of Norfolk. I have known the Gallion family for the last 17 years. I have watched Dr. Gallion grow up to be a young man. Him and his wife both have a very good intention for city of Norfolk. You know, and one of the things that we talk about in the city of Norfolk is always recruiting, 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 bringing people back to Norfolk. We have spent thousands of dollars with Elkhorn Valley Recruitment. The hospital spends thousands of dollars recruiting people to Norfolk. And most of the time, when we bring doctors to Norfolk, either through the hospital or through recruitment, we give them bonuses. We pay off their student loans, we give them housing allowances, we give them some breaks to get them into Norfolk. Here, we have an opportunity for two doctors, very good doctors, as a matter of fact, to come to Norfolk without being given a dime, without being given any kind of bonuses. As a matter of fact, they are going to be spending dollars in the city of Norfolk and putting a property that currently is not on a tax roll, on a tax roll to be able to pay property taxes. And what a better use of this property than making it a medical clinic. Again, I ask for your support. I think this is a process that, I know a lot of times we don't like fast-tracking things, I think this is a process as we have shortage of medical, especially GPs in Norfolk. I think this is a process, this is an application, that we should look at every possible way to fast-track and give Mr. Gallion, Dr. Gallion, a chance and opportunity to get his practice up and running, hopefully before the end of the year.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
I live at 902 North 37th Street, right north of the school. I don't know the Gallion family. I know Richard very well, but to get more doctors in this town, I think it's a wonderful deal. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak? In favor or in opposition, or may have questions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Dan Wilson, I'm a resident in 3700 Block West Prospect. My position, I guess, is a position of questioning as to the designation for the rezoning. Does it really need to be a C1 designation? Can it be an OD designation with the special conditional permit? The neighbors do welcome this business, it is much needed in this area. Our concern is that it maintained that of a residential-type neighborhood. It was that way when we bought property there, it is our hope that it'll be maintained that way. We feel if it is rezoned into commercial, that could possibly open up the door for other businesses down the road. Hopefully, the physician's clinic will be viable, that it will not fail, per se. Our concern is just the zoning considerations that are being addressed here this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Question for you.
I'm sorry?
Question for you. When you moved into your piece of property or your place, how long ago?
Seven years ago, approximately.
That would have been about in?
'04.
'04, okay. Because, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, was most of that C3 in place in '04? Yeah. Okay, just for your clarification.
Thank you.
The main difference between the C1 and C3 is the retail capabilities?
Well, no. That breakdown happens between OD and C1. C3, by definition, is typically along major thoroughfares, along a major arterial, it's a larger lot subdivision typically. It allows a few more intensities of uses. One of the things that pops up all the time is a drive-in restaurant with, that you can have a McDonald's with a drive-through feature 24/7, typically not real desirable in and adjacent to a residential area. So, there tends to be a softening effect by going to C1. It's more of a transitional out of a residential area, so that was one of the reasons it was considered here. We've bannered back and forth a great deal, the whole idea of the office district, and I believe in talking to Mr. Wilson, he's not concerned at all about the proposed use, it's all the other things on the list of C1 that could come in there if, in fact, the medical clinic were to go away. And so, I think there was some hope that the office district could be considered as a way to secure the medical clinic as an outright permitted use. The only thing that gets fuzzy then is that retail element, because the OD district is designed not to include the retail element of that. Oftentimes, those medical clinics have some small form of incidental use of sales. It doesn't become the predominant thing. It's, by square footage, a very small feature within the building, but the code doesn't speak directly to that. If you look in our definitions, we addressed that once with optometrists, I believe. We went in and allowed for an amendment to the code that allows for an eye doctor that wants to sell glasses, the ability to have those wares in the building for those patients that need those services. So, we amended the code to support that type of incidental retail use within those spaces. You know, that's something that's been talked about here as well, but the code as it's written today doesn't afford that opportunity, but it could be something that the council could pursue. C1 was the softest of the choices that Mr. Gallion indicated would serve their needs today, based on what they want to use the property for. So, they chose that over C3.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else that wants to come forward and address this issue?
I'd comment.
Great. Scott?
Thank you. This is Jeff Gallion again. In response to some of Mr. Wilson's concerns, we did talk about the office district. Mr. Cordis, very well designated, you know, our concerns with that, in that it sort of eliminates that retail component, and that's a concern, not just for the potential retail uses in the medical clinic, but also the remaining part of the property. As far as uses down the road, and hypothetical concern there, first of all, the investment and the intention of Dr. Jim and Dr. Carrie is such that they want to be here a long time, that's their goal, that's what they want to see happen. Regardless, after the investment they put into this property is made, this property is going to be well-suited for a medical clinic, potentially maybe another office use, but it's no longer going to have a best use for some of the more concerning commercial uses. So, I feel personally that once the zoning change is made and once these improvements are made, the property has sort of been converted into the type of property you would want as a neighbor long-term next to you. It's no longer going to be fit for a nightclub or something like that, it's going to be fit for a medical clinic or something similar to that. And as a final note, I failed to mention this before, the sale with Norfolk Public Schools is cont- is contingent upon this zoning change. For that reason, the buyers are ready to move forward, the sellers are, I'm sure, optimistic to get their money as soon as possible. So, we would ask if you would be willing to suspend the rules on three readings on separate days and move to make these zoning changes and improve them here today. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else that wants to come forward? If not, then I'm going to close both public hearings and look for, first of all, we need a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 3, 2011, for an amendment to the comp plan at 305 North Thirty-seventh Street. James R. Gallion submitted an application for a zoning change from R-3 Multiple Family Residential to C-1 Local Business District on this property. The comp plan reveals the parcels planned to use as high-density residential, and the requested zoning is commercial. The council will also hear the zone change request. The planning commission approved the request for the comp plan amendment on a nine-to-zero vote and recommended approval. The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 3, 2011, for a zoning change from R-3 Multiple Family Residential to C-1 Local Business at 305 North Thirty-seventh Street at the request of James R. Gallion. Mr. Gallion is requesting this zone change to remodel the existing setting metal school into a medical clinic. The area is a mixed commercial use, with a car dealer to the south and other offices to the east. The zone change request also requires an amendment to the comp plan. The planning commission recommended approval of the zone change from R-3 to C-1 on a nine-to-zero vote.
Okay. Thanks, Beth. And with that, then I would ask for consideration of Ordinance Number 5160 approving the change to the comprehensive plan from high-density residential to commercial at 305 North Thirty-seventh Street.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of Ordinance Number 5160 on first read. Second?
A motion and a second. Any further discussion at all? If not, I would ask for a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, if you would please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5160 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we pass Ordinance 5160 on second and third.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion with a second that we suspend and pass this on second and third reading. Any discussion at all?
The only thing I want to say is, I hear his concerns, Mr. Wilson's concerns, and I know what he's worried about, and we can do the best we can to make sure that they stay on track and do what they say they're going to do. When time comes, those people who would buy that would have to come in front of us, wouldn't they, Scott? Or in front of you, at least?
Well, if the zoning change to C-1 is approved tonight, any of those items that are in that list of C-1 would be permitted uses that they could come in, and from a land use standpoint, would be allowed to do immediately without approval from this body whatsoever. They may need to come in and secure building permits to do any of the renovation that they may need to do at that location to convert it to whatever building design they would want to have, but if it's within the spectrum of that C-1 list of permitted uses, there would be no requirement to come before the planning commission or this body. So, that check and balance is absent.
Is gone. You know, we can't really control it if we don't do the OD, but I do think that they're going to do what they say. I do believe they will be here for quite a while, because you aren't going to put that much money into that if they're not. So, I'm going to vote for it, but I would like to keep tabs of it, and I will keep tabs of it if I hear they're moving out of town, and then do the best I can to keep your neighborhood from getting something you don't want. There's not a lot we can do after this, but I can give you my word, we'll watch it as long as we can, so.
And I guess, we need to remember, we're talking about the comprehensive plan on this motion here. We're not talking about specific zoning, though. We're talking about changing from residential to commercial. That's the next item.
Yeah.
Right.
Mainly, I'm talking for the next item. Yeah. Sorry.
That's all right, Dave. You're always a little bit ahead of us, aren't you? Please understand, there's an awful lot of commercial already existing in that area, though. So, okay? So, we have a motion with a second. Are we ready to take a vote here, as far as second and third reading? Okay. Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5160 carries on second and third.
And then we will look to, ask for consideration of Ordinance 5161, changing the zoning district from R-3 to C-1 at 305 North Thirty-seventh Street.
Your Honor, I'd introduce Ordinance 5161.
Second that, Your Honor.
A motion and a second for consideration of Ordinance 5161. Any other discussion? We heard a little bit from Councilman Pousse already.
And I would, at this time, like to, you know, say a couple of things, and I always appreciate that the owner comes and talks to it, but this body always needs to remember that it doesn't matter who the owner is at this point in time. If we change that zoning, it's at that zoning for regardless of who that owner is and how well-intentioned they may or may not be. The only fallback that we have on that is that it's not outside of the limits of this body to go back in and say, "Okay, we're going to change the zoning back," if you don't. And I believe that's acceptable. What I've been told before, it doesn't happen very often, and it probably would involve a lawsuit.
Oh.
Neither here nor there, but, you know, it's regardless of, you know, how well-intentioned somebody may be, if the Gallions, God forbid, would have an accident or would pass away within the next, before they got opened, it would be open for anybody else wanting to do something for C-1. That being said, though, I would like to note, as the map showed, that we were making a transition from a much greater intensity level of a C-3 zoning, appropriately on up to what still, I believe, is part of that is R-3 above it yet, or not? Yeah, thank you. And so, that's actually a good transition element there. It's probably not the, you know, probably the most restrictive one would be the OD, but as far as zoning practices go, that's one that is actually talked about quite a bit. So, I do offer my support for it. I believe, you know, that's an appropriate transition in that area, and with that, I will be quiet.
Thanks, Councilman Lanning. Anyone else that wants to add to before we ask for a short title here? Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
With that, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5161 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Number 5161, second and third.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5161 carries on second and third.
Okay. I appreciate everyone being here tonight regarding this. This is the process, certainly, like I say, this is the way it needs to work, and, Mr. Wilson, I appreciate your being here, too, and expressing your concern, so. All right. Moving on to item number 26 on the regular agenda, a public hearing to consider amending the present comp plan on Sherwood Road, quarter of a mile west of First Street, from industrial and Elkhorn River corridor to rural residential. And at the same time, I think we can open the public hearing to, at the request of Elkhorn Construction, Paul Medelman, for a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District to RR Rural Residential District on Sherwood Road. That, I would open the public hearing. Scott, I don't mean to take away from you. I've been letting those come forward first and speak, but maybe you'd rather address this first?
I think that's just a wonderful practice.
I thought you might like that, so...
You guys hear me often enough, these fine gentlemen can tell their story. That's all right.
And I'm imagining it's Mr. Johnson that's going to come forward and speak to us first?
I'm Dick Johnson with Johnson Engineering, and I'm representing Elkhorn Construction Company on this request for zoning change. Paul Medelman is here, if you have any questions of him later on, but I guess I get to do most of the talking. This is located, fronts on Sherwood Road, a quarter of a mile west of First Street, and is forty acres. It's essentially a quarter of a mile by a quarter of a mile. The proposal is for rural residential zoning, which has a minimum lot size of one acre, if we can get sewer to it, and if it's feasible. The property right now is zoned industrial, so we're trying to go the other way and make it more restrictive. And if this works out, I guess Mr. Medelman would like to go ahead and try to do a subdivision out there and see if he can sell some lots along the lake. The area, the property is, the quarrying operation by Lyman Ritchie is completed on this forty acres, which is why we chose it. I would suspect that if this gets changed and is successful, as they complete more, we'll probably be back trying to do this again. But with that, I guess I'll open it up to questions.
Thanks, Dick. Anyone that has questions for Dick? None? Okay. All right. Thank you. Public hearing. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this? Opposition, too? Okay. Scott, anything you want to add to this at all?
No, I think there's been several questions emerged regarding lot size and water and sewer and access and all those type of things. We've had preliminary conversations with Paul Medelman regarding all that, and I know he's got Dick working on those for him. Before we would bring that to the, before this body, we'll address those issues and work those out. So, those are all appropriate things to be discussed during the time of the actual subdivision process and contained within the subdivision agreement. So, we'll be working forward with those as time allows and probably at a rate determined by how eager Mr. Medelman is to pursue the project. So, just, I had several questions emerge in regard to that, and just wanted you all to know that we haven't, we're not, it's not that we're not addressing those. The appropriate time would come as we work through that subdivision process, and at this point, we haven't even seen a preliminary drawing of the actual lot proposals that Mr. Medelman wants. So, when they are, we'll deal with those things appropriately.
Just to get a mental picture, is that like from Ritter Auto to Riviera Raceway, and then from Sherwood Road to the gravel pit? Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Scott, further question on that, then? What are those zoning areas down there, other than that, then? Like where Mr. Ritter is and where Riviera Raceway is? Do we know?
Well, we're cutting out of a swath of light industrial here. There's a large swath of light industrial that surrounds this area, I believe. And so, this is, you know, kind of takes a chunk right out of the middle of that section. There's a very, very large area of industrial zoning down in that area, so...
And I guess that's what I was getting at. I'm familiar with the area, and there's a lot of things that may not be quite as conducive for residential neighbors being right adjacent to them, and...
I don't know if Paul wants to address his view about any of those adjacent properties, or if Dick wants to. We certainly have discussed those.
And you said there's a one-acre requirement for that zoning, for lot size?
That's the minimum lot size if there's sewer.
Okay.
Yeah. Minimum lot size in the zoning is one acre, and the city code says if we have septic tanks, it has to be a minimum of three acres, so... As far as the area in that general vicinity is mostly zoned industrial, at least on the north side of the road. I will point out, there is residential south of Sherwood Road, and, matter of fact, I think there's a house just east of the land that we're proposing to zone. It's still zoned industrial, but I think there's a house there, if I remember correctly.
Okay. So, and I, you may not remember it here, I believe it was back about 2001, maybe two, when we were looking at moving, or Zobex was, I believe, looking at locating a piece or a distribution tank down there, and it drew considerable objection from the neighborhood due to the residential nature that was south of Sherwood Road at the time, and now we're, you know, we're starting to infringe on even the north side there, and, to be frank honest with you, my largest concern on a zoning change situation is that we're going to be impacting the people that have Riviera Raceway to a certain extent, and, you know, granted, it's a seasonal situation, but when they run on Friday nights, I can hear them at my house. I can hear them much more distinctively at my place of business, which, I mean, I rent the space, but I'm wondering how well that, you know, what I'm fearful is, is that we'll have a similar situation that occurred on North First Street there, at least the people were renting the property that the go-karts ran on at that time, and then there was considerable uproar as the area to the west developed, and suddenly it was that, that's got to go away. And I guess, comments on that, or...
Well, Paul and I have talked about that a little bit, and about the putting the residential in the industrial area, and I guess I told him that, you know, if he wants to do that, it's his risk, and it's going to be his money. You know, if people don't want to buy out there because there's a racetrack there, they won't. You know, I guess I'd prefer to see the market deal with it. I did, the lady that lives in the house immediately south of Riviera called me after the planning commission public hearing and had a question about the zoning, and I visited with her for a minute and asked her about the Riviera Raceway, and she said with the windows closed, it really doesn't bother her. I mean, she can hear it, don't get me wrong, but, and she, as a matter of fact, she said that when she was younger, the kids went up on the roof to watch the races, but... But yeah, it's been considered and thought out by Paul, and I guess he's willing to take the risk.
I do remember that was addressed to someone at the planning commission meeting, too. You know, as far as the comments that were shared, that very thing was shared, if I remember right. There was a couple of people that were there that questioned that very thing.
Well, the people that were, yeah, there was some talk about the potential noise. As I recall, the people that were asking about the zoning, the light industrial, I think Ritter was there.
Right.
And they were concerned that this action would somehow change their zoning, as was the lady that called me, and I said, "No, that can't happen unless they want it to," or, and I've never seen it in thirty years, but the city can instant, like you were talking about earlier. Thanks a lot, but no, the city does have the right to initiate a zoning change on a piece of property. I, like I say, I don't know of any time that I can remember that they've ever done it against the landowners' objections.
Okay, Dick, thanks.
Anything else?
Anything else? Anyone?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Where are we? We're still in...
Public hearing.
Yeah, we're still in the public hearing. Okay, and I have yet to close it, have I? Okay, and I have yet to close it, have I? Anyone else that wants to speak to this then? If not, close the public hearing. And it looks like we will need to take action then, consideration of, oops, you need a Planning Commission report. I'm sorry, Beth.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 3, 2011 for an amendment to the comp plan one-quarter mile west of First Street on Sherwood Road. Elkhorn Construction Company and Paul Medelman submitted an application for a zoning change from I-1 light industrial to RR rural residential on this property. The comp plan reveals a parcel's planned use as industrial in Elkhorn River corridor and the requested zoning is rural residential. Excuse me. The council will also hear the zoning change request. The Planning Commission approved the request on the comp plan on a nine to zero vote. And the Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 3, 2011 for a zone change from I-1 light industrial to RR rural residential on the property one-quarter mile west of First Street and Sherwood Road at the request of Elkhorn Construction Company, Paul Medelman. Elkhorn Construction is requesting the zone change to develop a lakeside residential area on the property that was formerly a sand pit. Sand mining on this portion of the pit has been completed and the area restored to pre-mining condition. Mr. Medelman plans to develop one-acre lots. However, the lot sizes will be determined by the availability of city sewer. The zone change also requires an amendment to the comp plan and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the zone change from I-1 to RR on a nine to zero vote.
Okay. And now I would ask for consideration of Ordinance Number 5162, amending the comprehensive plan from industrial and Elkhorn River corridor to residential one-quarter of a mile west of First Street on Sherwood Road.
Your Honor, I would introduce Ordinance Number 5162 on first reading.
Second?
We have a motion with a second for consideration of Ordinance 5162. Any further discussion at all? Short title on this, too, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. And with that, if you would please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5162 carries on first reading.
I guess I would ask, Paul, do you have this on a fast track or could we give it a meeting to get some feedback or how do you want it handled?
Well, I would like to pass it for second, third.
I guess I would move we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5162 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass on second and third. If no further discussion, I would ask that you please vote.
Voting in favor of suspension of rules is Councilperson Coy. Merrill, Clausen, Marin, Brennaman, Faust, Saunders voting against the motion. Councilman Langy, motion carries.
And next is consideration of Ordinance Number 5163, amending the zone district from I-1 light industrial to RR rural residential, quarter of a mile west of First Street on Sherwood Road at the request of Elkhorn Construction, Paul Medelman. I would ask for a motion there?
Your Honor, I propose Ordinance Number 5163.
63? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion with a second for consideration of 5163. Any further discussion at all? If not, short.
Oh, excuse me.
All right, jump in there, Jim.
Okay. Again, my, my only concern is that this body be aware of, you know, the existing conditions that are going on down there right now. And, you know, it's always one of those buyer beware situations where we're saying, you know, "Okay, you're locating next to a, next to a racetrack, expect some noise that way." However, I'll remind you also that it wasn't that many years ago when Mr. Porter had a problem with a lot of people that were close to him. They did rural residential off of a gravel road and then complained when the trucks rolled by and their clothes got dirty on the wash line. So when you move next to a racetrack, I hope this body remembers and does not make the racetrack cease and desist in a few years.
Point well made. Anyone else that has anything to add to this, council? If not, short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. And with that, I would ask that you please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5163 carries on first reading.
I guess with no one speaking in opposition, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5163 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second for consideration of 5163 on second and third reading. Again, any further discussion? Sir?
And the only thing I would say about that, I mean, we have moved forward with the comprehensive plan. I don't think the zoning situation is going to make or break any starting of any plan developments or any other things in that area. I will vote against it mainly because I just want to offer the people in that area an opportunity to, you know, if they do have concerns, to come before this and speak at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is two weeks from now, so.
I think it's three weeks from now, isn't it?
Three weeks?
Yep.
Or two?
We have.
Oh, you got a five.
Yes, you do. So you have three weeks in there. So with that, any other discussion? If not, I'm going to ask that you please vote to suspend and pass on second and third.
Voting in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, Councilperson Coy. Merrill, Clausen, Marin, Brennaman, Faust, Saunders voting against the motion. Councilperson Langy, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, Dick, Paul, for being here. Going on then is on the regular agenda, we're looking for consideration of Ordinance Number 5164, vacating a portion of the replat of Block 13, Pazwalk 6th Edition, and a portion of the plat of Pazwalk 6th, well, let me see, all located in Section 26 Township. That being said, I would ask for a motion on that for consideration.
I'd move consideration of Ordinance 5164. Second.
A motion with a second. I think I'm going to look for someone from staff to come up maybe and give us a little information on this, Dennis.
This is the Veterans Memorial Park area. And all of the original, this was originally platted as a part of the Pazwalk 6th Edition, so there are lots and blocks and streets and alleys out there underlying the park, none of which have been vacated over the years. The National Guard Armory is also sitting on top of this. So there's technically streets and alleys and things that are under both the National Guard Armory and the, and the park area. This vacates all of those and gets us back down to bare ground. And then we'll be doing a lot boundary change that we'll be bringing forward for your consideration to swap a small strip of land from the armory to the city and a piece to the south of the armory so they can update their parking facilities. Since that facility was built, they've become a transportation unit, so they end up in there with some larger vehicles, so. Can I answer any questions you might have?
So are you saying the only one affected by this, other than the memorial park area, is the armory?
The armory and the city are the two property owners of the property that we're dealing with.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay. Hearing none? Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to vacate a portion of the replat of Block 13, Pazwalk 6th Edition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and a portion of the plat of Pazwalk 6th Edition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, all located in Section 26, Township 24 North, Range 1, west of the 6th BM, City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. With that, if you would please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5164 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we, oh, never mind, that we pass Ordinance 5164 on second and third.
Second that, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any discussion? Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5164 carries on second and third.
Okay. And finally on the agenda tonight is a request for discussion of an offer that's been brought forward to the city to provide administrative office space. Certainly what I would like to do is suggest that we take advantage of having this discussion, go into a closed session here as elected officials and be able to come back out and give direction to city staff. Could I have a motion as such?
So move, Your Honor.
Second?
A motion with a second. We will go into closed session, turn right next door and come out. I'm sorry, we better vote on this, though.
But Dave and I could.
You don't like that, Jim?
Dave and I said we're going to do it.
Yep. Rob, are you with us?
Yes.
You want to vote?
All persons voting in the affirmative.
Okay, so the motion is carried. The closed session is to discussion, discuss an offer brought to the city to provide administrative office space, so.